Everybody's ready, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the town planning commission to order. And I note we have a quorum, so I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Motion made and seconded, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is the approval of the regular minute, meeting minutes of June 21, 2016. I'll give everybody a chance to go through them. And for my part, Madam Secretary, under item two, under other business, town plan work, B. Mr. Batzo mentioned however not required yet. So, the Southern Vermont Economic Report states that the town plan should include a section of arts, culture. Mrs. Barsati will work on this. What is not required? You mean the southern, the, the, the section on arts and, okay. Then I think we should say, Mr. Batzo mentioned that while a section on arts and culture is not yet required, it's recommended that, the Southern Vermont Economic Report recommends that the town plan should include a section of arts, on arts and, on arts and culture.
The terminology is Southern Vermont?
Well, that's what's in the minutes. It says Southern Vermont Economic Report.
It's the Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone Report.
Okay.
Just a small...
No, that's, thank you.
Which is Wyndham and Bennington Counties? Correct.
Okay, so as amended, it will read, "Mr. Batzo mentioned that while a section on arts and culture is not yet required, the Southern Vermont Economic Development Zone Report suggests that the town plan should include a section on arts and culture." Period, Mrs. Barsati will work on the section. Any other changes to the minutes for the meeting of June 21? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve as amended. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Madam Clerk, do we have any mail?
No, you gotta do the July 5th one, set a minutes first.
Oh. How could I skip over that? There are minutes of a special work session held at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, July 5. That was the interview with prospective or with candidates for zoning administrator. Please go through it, make sure that you don't have any changes. Julie, I think when we made the motion to recommend Nelson, it was conditioned upon, Shannon? Conditioned upon a monthly log to be written in greater detail. And a draft copy of the ZA job description, not your job description. And monthly report, not your monthly report, must be given to the secretary by the third Tuesday of the month. Any other changes for the meeting, the special meeting of July 5? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to approve as amended. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Now, Madam Clerk, do we have any mail?
Yes.
You're not holding us up?
No, I didn't. I just said it wasn't that bad.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Um, BCRC, I don't know where I got them from. Somebody sent me the minutes from the BCRC River Corridor Steering Man Meeting of June Town. I honestly don't know where I got them from. But we asked for them. But I can't remember who or how I got them. Sorry. And then I have the link to July 2016 VLCT News. And I'll email that to you guys. And then I have State Government Municipal Day is Wednesday, September 9th in Mount Hillier. And I have BCRC News and Notes for July 2016.
State Government Municipal Day on September 9th has a number of sessions spread over the course of the day. And you can elect among, looks like 25. Or so, pass this around if it's of any interest to anybody. You should avail yourself of it.
I think that's still Nelson and I, I will put Nelson on that one. I did last year. I think it was last year. When we went to Mount Hillier. Was it last year, when Nelson, I don't know, for Government Day?
That one happens in the middle of the winter. I think this, the date on this one?
September.
Yes, this is a supplementary to that. To the best of my knowledge.
Okay. And then I have a letter from Northeast Organic Farming Association of Vermont. Dear Planning Commission, it talks about impact for gardening. I think we already allow people to do that anyway. With the little farms and farmer markets.
Do you want to know what we do on that?
I was gonna say, but we've been...
This announces the availability of a guide, supporting and managing rural enterprises in your community, which actually might have some bearing on the town plan.
And I have the CL, VLCT Newsletter for July, which is a booklet. And then I have a notice of visual study. Please be advised that on Saturday, July 30th, 2016, weather permitting, Blue Sky Towers LLC will conduct a visual study, as known as a balloon test, on the land of 3 Torrey Tower Road from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
I don't know where I saw it, but I saw it somewhere.
I think we did it on mine, too.
You might have.
And then I have the BCRC Agenda for Thursday, July 21st, at Sunday. So revise.
Hiding everything.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda is public comment.
We did it last month. I think Shannon and Rick did a lot of work on that piece that we discussed last time. I just want to thank them very much for following through and coming up with what I believe is a concise and appropriate statement.
This is on the arts and culture?
Arts and culture, and doing it in very short order. And I know I throw that ball out there, and I just want to say thank you for seeing the follow through.
Here, here.
Here, here.
Anything else?
I did get a letter from Lendus, the letter that we wrote seeking for BCRC to review the remaining section of the town plan, that this request was approved by the Select Board on their July 7th meeting. And then for the zone, Nelson has interim for ZA.
He's been appointed here for ZA?
Yep. At the July 7th meeting also. So those, just proof there that...
Well, I think we, I'll pass them around, but you're gonna keep these?
Yes, just so I can... That's all I have for May.
Looks like the, um, balloon study will be for the town fair.
Well, we go to the balloon study on the way to the town fair.
Right.
Little detour.
Very nice touch. Don't get lost.
Bet you can't even see it from your house because of the trees behind your house.
No, in fact, Bill can see it probably from your house. I mean, that's, actually, my friends Julie and Leila live not at the very top of the ridge there, but at the end of Tower Road. And from there view, you can see Stromeyer's Farm. So I think from Stromeyer's...
Really?
And then I know I, when I, from your place, we'd been able to look across there, too. So, like, those were the two suggestions I gave as a photo of, but that's really far away.
Stromeyer's got the views, though. They really got nice views.
Yeah, they do. They do, well, it's the, I think it's like, it's like the highest...
I don't see a guest other than Bill, and you had your say, don't you? Okay. We have all been parsing the ZA's monthly log. I will make an attempt to read it into the record. I don't know if this is 5, 6, 2016, meaning May 6th, 2016? I don't think so.
No, it's May and June.
Oh, May and June, okay.
He's doing them every two months now.
Okay. Number of applications received, eight. Number accepted, eight. Number returned consequently, zero. Number of permits granted, seven. DEC, Reesway 2, shed addition. Oh, very hard to read.
Trailers.
Trailers, oh, okay. Must be an abbreviation for trailer. Number forwarded to DRB, one subdivision. Numbers of applications in process. Status and end date. His work was follow-up on junk removal, parentheses, visits and drive-bys, close parentheses, calls on type presumably of uses allowed in zone from people. People call up and say, what can I do in this zone district, I guess? 2A application process work, what is 2A?
It's ZA.
Oh, ZA. Application process work, comma, meeting. Grant work, parentheses, state contract, town officials, close parentheses, work on finishing. Check up on business type to see if home occupation or need or special permit is needed.
I'm sorry.
Signs, et cetera. ATF?
Sawmill.
Sawmill? ATF as in?
ATF is the one that, um...
Alcohol, tobacco, and firearms?
No, they're on Route 346.
Alcohol, tobacco, and firearms.
Yes. The ATF come down because somebody wants to do, to be able to sell guns and ammos from their home. And thus, in our book, says they don't need a permit, so...
Of course not, why would anybody?
Because he's checking to see if it's allowed or not in the Bible.
Does anybody know what that other word is after signs, et cetera? It looks like it begins with a P?
P, yeah.
Oh, pottery.
I get pottery.
Pottery, because they're one up there, they're gonna do more pottery. And then this, um...
ATF, sawmill. Meeting with rep on law changes that affect zoning in town, parentheses, something town plan. Water protection changes, et cetera. Okay, busy, busy two-month period. Do we have to accept this, or do we just read it into the record?
Nope, we just read it, so is that...
Okay.
Can I add something to this?
You may. Well, I don't know, are you the ZA?
I am not the ZA, but as a member of the commission, I would just like to ask, and maybe to the ZA, who's not present, that maybe in the future, these get typed up, so it can be more easily understood. Would that be in our, within our jurisdiction?
Well, the recommendation we made to the Board of Selectmen as a condition for appointing him for another three years.
Didn't say whether it was to be typed or not.
No, it said in greater detail.
Right.
We have a greater detail.
Didn't say legible.
Right. And I was just wondering how many times this was copied, besides its legibility.
We're advised, we're advised that that itself is a carbon copy, then photocopy. So the original, somewhere, the pristine, pure original...
Don't expect to get the original, but I don't know which edition was finally passed out. And it, I mean, as you said, as you elegantly pointed out, it was hard to read.
Let the record reflect that a member of the commission commented on the legibility of the ZA report. Next item on the agenda is town plan work. And Julie has given, sent me just now via email the recreation section, which I am going to edit and bring back for the next meeting. She's gonna find me the education section and get it to me in Word, and I will edit and get it back. And then before the meeting, I asked Julie if she would be in a position to comment on what we have gotten done and what we have yet to do.
Well, in front of you, we have the Route 7 and Route 346 corridor that Rick had done.
Yeah, is that in our handout?
It's in our packet.
Okay, yep.
And then we have the arts and cultural, no, arts and cultural resources in front of us.
So we ought to review these and approve them.
If that's what you so choose to do, or you can...
Well, we want to move along, so...
Yes.
Okay, everybody, start reading. That's right.
Do you want to look at them?
Me as well.
There's that one. There's that one.
I just have a quick question as I'm reading this. Did you write this one? The 346?
Um, I added it.
Are you adding it?
Yes.
Are we saying that, um, these areas along Route 7 from Lad Road to Barber's Pond Road, and Route 346, et cetera? Because we say they should be preserved, but are we, but then it also seems like this is, we're saying this is an appropriate area to develop?
I think he's saying those areas are ones that we should discourage development to, to retain the scenic...
I think that sentence leads off, or that thought, the view sheds and stretches of road that we believe should be preserved are the following.
Right, just looking at the second sentence, or the last sentence. Thus, these corridor areas should be delineated as a specific planning area and guidelines adopted to promote appropriate development.
Okay.
So...
So that could be taken any way, you're right. To promote appropriate development, though, I think, and, and, and we can edit that to be much more definite, because I do, you know, I certainly wouldn't want it to be a question. I do believe it relates to the first sentence, the view sheds should be preserved.
Right.
But if it's not clear, then we should eliminate those rules.
I wonder if you don't say, instead of development, you say preservation?
To promote appropriate preservation and conservation. I think, I think that's great. Yep.
I have a question, and that is when we are describing an area, Route 7 north and south from Lad Road to Barber's Pond.
Yes. I think we all agreed on that, on both sides of the road.
Right.
Oh, is that what it said, is that what?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Why do we say both sides of the road?
You could say both sides of the road. Whatever direction that might be. Could do it that way.
I now, you mean north and south lanes?
I do.
Why don't we add lanes?
And if you were looking at a compass, I would also say it's north and south, as far as that goes.
But the fact that you mean both sides of the road, I think, is what is missing.
Okay.
And I would point out that the road sign at the end of Tubbs Road has 1B, T-U-B-S. No apostrophe S.
Right. Tubbs is...
We talked about that. I think we talked about that at one point. It's spelled two different ways in the town, so...
Oh, is that right?
But I called, I called...
At this specific location, it's T-U-B-S. But there's other areas in town where it's T-U-B-B, apostrophe S.
Well, it's named after the Tubbs, which is that formation in the, in the stream.
Yeah.
And that's with 1B.
And it's not plural, and it's not ownership.
Are we in favor of adding lanes after north and south from Lad Road? So it says north and south lanes.
Or would you rather see both sides of Route 7 between Lad and Barber's Pond?
That's better, that's better. And changing development to preservation?
Yep.
You could also just take out, you could just say to promote appropriate conservation practices.
Yes, you could.
You don't really need to say preservation.
It's somewhat redundant.
I'll go for that.
Yeah.
What did you hear say, I'm sorry?
Take out the word development and, so it says, guidelines adopted to promote appropriate conservation practices.
So we're pressing on preservation.
And I'm sorry I wasn't here for that first discussion, I was...
Oh, it's okay.
A little confused.
It's a matter of style, and I don't particularly care, but you have capitalized biking, hiking, and boating. And then down below, you have capitalized bike lanes and signage. Anybody else have any other comments on section 3.3.10, Route 7 and Route 346 corridors? In addition to the changes we've just discussed? Do we take a vote on these?
Would it be appropriate for you to mention some?
It certainly would.
Would you be interested in, as well as bike lanes and signage, or safe walking?
Safe walking?
Walking areas? I bring it up because I hear from many people about being able to say get from the ball field to the post office, it's in-village areas, and you may do that in the intersection like that.
So we change promote bike lanes and signage, which say bike lanes, signage, and, and safe walking, and not alleys?
Many people talk about the difficulty of walking the long parts of Route 7, the common. Not just get into how you would do it or anything more.
So we're gonna say and safe walking? Oh, sounds fine. Okay, so bullet point four, under traffic management, is now gonna read promote bike lanes, comma, signage, and safe walking. Anything else? I'll call for a motion to approve section 3.3.10.
A second?
Was there a motion? You did, Shannon second. Oh, you did, okay. Any further comment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next is art, art and cultural resources. We'll have to assign a number to it when we figure out where to stick it in.
Are we gonna say where?
I think it's supposed to be in economic development, or, so I'm not sure where that, it fits best, but I think that's where it's supposed to be.
Okay, economic development.
Let's look.
That would be 6.0.
And the old one, that was business and industry, but you're right, it's renumbered, isn't it?
Economic? Of course, it's already done.
Maybe we could just go on the very end, then, right?
Yeah, I think it ought to go at the end.
So many sections really morph into another section. They really do have hazy boundaries.
Let's see. So for economic, I have current status, less than 20, more than 40, there's more goals, policy. Well, we do, as you guys are reading, as I look in our economic section, after it's, in the section, it goes expand the housing market, and then the next one is recreational activities and tourism.
So you would put arts and cultural resources between the two?
Thinking it, and then the next section is resident-owned businesses, larger employees.
That's right.
I'm assuming that's where we would insert it.
So what, what number would that be?
It is gonna be, let me see. Current status is 6.1. So it's 3.2, less than 20.
Nice job, Shannon.
It's gonna be right under, it's, it will be in 6.3, under moving forward. So then insert the arts and culture.
6.3?
Yes. And I'll fix our economic development thing, because I've been trying to do my sections all with my table of contents, so I don't have to, I go as I... so I don't have to, I go as I go.
So these policies, I basically lifted from the Bravelboro Town Plan, but theirs was much more specific, and they got into much more detail that they're gonna be collecting, and I thought these were the most general. That seemed like we can try.
Aspirational.
Yeah. Right.
Rick, you're active in the arts, what, do you have any thoughts about this?
As I'm looking at the second policy, collect information regarding the cultural community's role in the economic vitality of Palinol. I guess that is very specific.
Right, who does that collecting and how?
Right.
And what, and to what end result?
Right.
Right, so I think something about staying abreast of the region's movements, because Palinol possibly, or likely, might not generate its own, but might be able to capitalize on movements from the north and the south. So being abreast of that, I think, is important.
It's like seeing a breast of.
Right.
Opportunities.
Right.
So you're saying that.
It's just that it won't be self-generating. So.
The second one.
I don't know if that should be an additional sentence to the second one, what do we think?
I would add a second sentence.
Yeah, I think it should be second.
So collect information regarding the cultural community's role in the economic. What am I writing here? What did you say?
Collect information regarding the cultural community's role in the economic vitality of Palinol. Strive to accumulate the information from the region's impact, knowledge of the region's impact. Say north to south, where the region might be specific enough. We're concerned with the economic vitality of Palinol, that's true, but I think we have to have a wider eye to effect it correctly.
I can tell when something's going on in Williamstown, because the motel's full. That's the only time it's full.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think of it. I like what you said in the beginning, maybe just stay abreast of arts and cultural opportunities.
Yeah, that's, that's better.
In our region. It's pretty broad.
Right. And we could go as far as saying that are, that in fact are developing, not in the region, not just may develop. I mean, it's happening on both sides of us, so I think we can kind of indicate that they are developing.
Right.
And you wouldn't stay abreast of that, but, but so that you could disseminate it.
Is that best, that's more specific than staying abreast?
No, but you stay abreast so that you can then disseminate it to your citizens.
That's the purpose, right? So if I allow ourselves of any opportunities as a result of that.
Honey, that's a lot better.
One thing that came to my mind when I was looking at these, and so many of the policies, you know, what comes up is, these are great ideas, but who's gonna do, who could help us to do this? And one, just that crossed my mind, because I actually did this when I was younger. I was a Vista volunteer in Chicago, and I, I know that's a program, there's AmeriCorps volunteers. I mean, Vista was like the domestic Peace Corps, and so, but it had a more administrative focus, where you'd get one person coming in to be the assistant to the town manager, or whatever, to help collect all this.
You could imagine having an internship.
Yeah, well, because, I think of Vista because its purpose is really to alleviate poverty, and I think that you can apply for these programs. Bill, you probably know something about this. Do you know much about the Vista program?
I don't know a tremendous amount, but I know Vista, they often, if there's a group that will work with, will sponsor them. It's very much, what's that other one, is that? It's the same thing, Volunteers for America.
Volunteers in service to America, that's what Vista stands for.
They've been used very effectively, you know, by the Regional Commission.
Oh, they have. Well, that's what I was wondering, yeah.
The hospital and others, and they often are a way to do projects that you would not ordinarily get to yourself, to sign them on those.
Especially like data collection, or putting together a resource guide, or something for the community.
Do you think that any of the colleges would be interested in one of their students as an intern? I know America Silver at Bennington College, the president of Bennington College, is very interested in the corridor from North Adams up to Bennington, and needs to be, you know, to promote what her endeavors are. And I just wonder if, to that, to that extent, if there could be intern programs, and maybe from S V C, or an intern, that can fuse it and, and collect the data and be, be that person.
Yes, I think the answer to that is yes. The folks that are working on that for the last couple of years, is that Bennington Economic Development Partners has a subgroup on workforce education and development, and Jeanne Jenkins is the chair of that, she works at the Community College, but has been bringing a number of people is to establish internships within this area, working with colleges or whatever, other sources. So connecting with them would probably be the most likely way to go, since they've already been well down the road on, well, what would an internship be? If you ask somebody to sponsor an internship, the first thing they want to know is, well, how do I do one? You know, I'm busy, my life is full, how do I do it? They've been working on issues along that line, so I think the suggestion is to make sure that, you know, towns as entities, if they were positioned to do so successfully, be part of it.
Being that you said there are interns, internships of that nature at the Community College, do you know what they specifically detail and are involved with?
Well, I think there's a, I don't know a lot about it, I know, you know, some, but they do any number of activities. I think that, you know, through there, Southern Vermont College has put a lot with businesses, with local businesses in Bennington, I think, done some, especially probably with the hospital, you know, and nursing, I've heard of those. I think that, I wouldn't be all surprised if, well, I think the Regional Commission may have them from time to time. Part of the work they're doing, it'd be best to ask them, is that, is redoing some inventory and seeing what the examples are. It's not robust, but there's deep interest within the, in the area in furthering internships. I think a lot of internships that you would see around here could often be with some of our agricultural folks. Wouldn't be at all surprised, I don't know if my food farm doesn't have one, or if on occasion, if.
I think they do.
Wildstone Farm and others are using.
I thought that was interesting a few years ago, when Williams had one of their classes come up with ideas, and they exhibited them at the public school in a meeting, as to what might be some economic drivers or businesses here.
Specifically related to the track.
Specifically related to the track, in that case.
Yeah. And somebody thought of food processing.
Because that's a real need.
Butchery.
It's a real need locally.
If we've exhausted.
No, can I just ask one question? Can we arrange, can we rearrange, like where, in the beginning, where it goes like Bennington College or Williamstown, or Williams College, can we do like the Bennington College, Southern Vermont, Community College of Vermont, and then do Williams College, and then Massachusetts College of.
Because you wanna segregate them into, by state.
Not, not, yeah, not.
We wanna fertilize them.
That's fine.
But can I just rearrange them?
That makes you feel better to do it by state?
Sure.
I don't, I don't think we're partial.
Well, somebody might, for future, wanna, wanna know where Williams is in Palinol or Bennington.
Okay.
It's fine.
It's fine, it's fine.
Moved, seconded, endorsed.
Yes.
I'm just, sorry. No, no, that's all, good for you.
I can ask, how do you get to Williamstown, how do you get to St. John's?
Julie, I can send you that change, and then I add that other sentence.
Okay.
That we just talked about.
Are we prepared to have a motion to approve as amended, subject to your putting it in final form?
Sure.
Is there such a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we have two more sections. What's next?
I'm still waiting feedback from the Rescue Historic Society.
Okay.
And then, I think that's about it, but then I wanna just double check, make sure we didn't forget any in Michael's new.
Well, I've got, I've got the education section to do over when you get it to me, and I've got recreation to do over when you get it to me. And we've approved arts and culture and.
Did we ever do population? I don't, I didn't think that was one of the one, was that?
I don't remember even talking about it.
No, that's.
That we had to do.
Population?
Because I know, that was in our other one, I just wanted to review in the new book that Michael.
In terms of a census?
Yeah, but I, because it's in our old one, but I just wanted to make sure that we got all of the sections that we're supposed to have. Because I know we currently had 14, but they said we didn't need them all, but I just wanted.
We don't have to take everybody's time to do that.
No, that's what I'm saying, I will look at it, but I think, I think they're pretty much good. We get the land use, the land use done, residential.
May I ask a question in general, and I don't know if it exists and where it would be put, but I'm not certain if we mentioned at all the development of the hospital and the satellite through Dartmouth Hitchcock, Bennington, Southwest Vermont Hospital, that that happened here.
We should.
I think we need to indicate.
There's supposed to be a section on municipal and other facilities available in town, that's where that would.
It is a big deal, it really shows faith in the area, they wouldn't put that big money here.
We did add it, though, somewhere.
Okay, that's what, I wasn't certain.
Because I know, but I had to, I know we talked about all the different businesses, and I know we said we forgot it, but I added it, but. Let me.
You did a nice job.
Oh, yeah, it really did. And it's the prototype for what their satellites, what they're gonna be around.
Which one we did it, because I know we did it in one.
Nice pictures by Leslie.
Because we mentioned all the businesses.
Yep.
But let me think about where it was, and, because I know I changed it when we mentioned it, and I did it in our final ones, but I don't know right offhand.
Well, I'd like to suggest that between this meeting and the next one, you identify anything that we've left out of the proposed plan, and see if you can find the location of where we make mention of the walk-in clinic.
And I think we need to do more than mention it, I think we need to address it as a development that's worthy of mention because of the faith in the area. Yeah, I think we could be a little dramatic, but I think it's realistic.
It was in the section where we did, because we didn't have the pet place either.
Right.
I mentioned the pet place.
Because that was mentioned, but I'm.
So that's another great.
Thinking of where it was that, I'll look in my.
Considering what is happening down in Berkshire County with the proliferation of these walk-ins, they are a real profit center.
This is not a walk-in clinic, though.
No, it isn't. It's a doctor's office.
Yeah, it's three internists there, GPs, so.
So you can't walk in, you have to make an appointment?
Right.
As you go to your doctor. I mean, there is a walk-in clinic up the street, you know.
And your first visit is two hours.
Anything else to come before the meeting tonight? Hearing none, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So I move.
And a second. All in favor?